Okay, are we good?
Ready.
Yeah, there you go.
Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening and welcome, ladies and gentlemen. The meeting of the North Ogden City Council is called to order. Appreciate you being here. We're glad to see so many people here tonight for our brief council meeting, our first council meeting as well to inaugurate two new members to our city council. I want to recognize Representative Justin Fawson, our state legislator here with us this evening, and thank him for being here. Also, many of our department heads and everyone else. Please, ladies and gentlemen, just turn your cellphones on silent during the meeting, or turn those off. And we'll begin, as we always do here in North Ogden City, with a invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Swanson has been asked to give us the invocation this evening. And then we have Tyson from Troop 496, the patrol leader of our scout group back here that will lead the -- come forward at that point after the invocation and lead the audience in the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Swanson.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful to be gathered together as residents of this wonderful city. We're thankful for the government that we have, the freedoms that we enjoy that allow us to meet in safety, and for the opportunity for we as citizens to serve. We're grateful for those who ran in our last election and for those who have been elected. We pray, Father, that thou will bless them in their service, that their hearts will be filled with the love of the residents that we all enjoy, and that they'll be pleased with the service that they give. We pray for a spirit of camaraderie and cooperation during our meeting this night, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, Tyson.
Please repeat the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Swanson, and thank you, Tyson. We just have two quick items on the consent agenda, two sets of minutes from last year. Council members, are there any comments on those minutes or a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Then that is passed. I think my son joined in the vote back there. So, we have our active agenda up next, ladies and gentlemen, is public comments. If there's anyone that would like to make any comments at the start of the meeting, we invite you forward at this time. Okay, seeing none, then we'll move right on to our swearing-in of new council members and mayor by the city recorder Annette Spindler. This is a great event. We also want to recognize we have Ms. North Ogden here with us this evening, Abby Lang. So, we'll invite her up when we -- to take some pictures with all of our new council members as we move along. So, Annette, why don't you just tell us the order here for the swearings in?
We'll do Sarah Fawson first, and then Blake Severing, then Mayor Taylor.
Okay.
So, if you'll just stand right here and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Utah
and the Constitution of the State of Utah
and that I will discharge the duties
and that I will discharge the duties
of my office with fidelity
of my office with fidelity.
Thank you. Can I have you sign this?
Let's give a round of applause. John, let's get a picture of Councilwoman Fawson signing as well. This is great.
Do I have Abby up here too?
Yeah.
Abby, will you come up?
And, Councilwoman, any of your family that you'd like to invite up for a picture as well?
I think all of them.
And then we'll take one with all the council at the end as well.
I'm dressed like I always do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now, Councilman-elect Severing.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support
I do solemnly swear that I will support
obey and defend
obey and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Utah
and the Constitution of the State of Utah
and that I will discharge
and that I will discharge
the duties of my office
the duties of my office
with fidelity
with fidelity.
Thank you.
Yeah, our first left-handed council member. Okay, I think that we don't know what to do. Okay, whoever you'd like for a picture, Councilman Severing?
I'm gonna invite my mom up.
Okay.
Yes, your mom should.
I only have one son here, but I have a mom and a son, one son.
Let's get one with Ms. North Ogden as well.
Okay, one, two, three. And one more. When the camera's ready, here we go. Okay, one, two, three.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this state
and the Constitution of this state
and that I will discharge the duties
and that I will discharge the duties
of my office with fidelity
of my office with fidelity.
Thank you.
Better get a wide, wide-angle lens.
We might need to all come over here. Come on up, kiddos. Okay.
Snorted.
Okay, one, two, three. Need a faster camera. Okay? One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay, let's get all our current council members and our new council members as well. We'll get one picture all together. You tie it?
Yeah.
Whoa, surrounded here. Okay, one, two, three. Look at his, there you go. Okay? One more, one, two, three. Oh, no, can you come up for one as well?
Thanks.
Okay. One, two, three. Slide this there. Everybody.
They need to come up here though. Don't, don't sit down there, sir and Blake, you're up there.
Okay, so let's welcome our new council members up to join us. I think we have name tags for them.
It doesn't matter to me. Excited? Oh, okay.
That seat has the responsibility of keeping him in control.
I better take this.
Does it mean?
Okay, we'll, we'll have your name tags next time, and
I thought you were pointing at Blake.
This will be our order. So, let's go for some, some thoughts or words, Councilwoman Fawson. Let's start with you. Is there anything you'd like to share with the citizens? We're, we're putting this on our website, and it's on Facebook Live as well, and livestreamed. All of our meetings are always livestreamed on YouTube. So, is there anything you'd like to share with the citizens today?
I would just like to say thank you. I'm excited to represent the city, and I'm excited, I'm so honored for all the support and just the opportunity to be involved in the issues that are going on in the city and participate in the discussion. I'm excited to work with this group of individuals who are all hard workers and who all care about a place that we all really love to live. So, thank you for the opportunity, and I'm delighted to get to work for you.
Thank you. Welcome, Councilwoman Fawson. Councilman Severing, anything you'd like to share?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I've had a chance over the years to, and I hope it will be okay to maybe mention, I've had an opportunity on many occasions to serve in some religious positions that caused me a little fear and trepidation and a lot of humility. And I have to confess, the day after the election, I felt as much fear about beginning this responsibility than I did for those particular positions. And I'm very humbled, and I'm grateful that the citizens of North Ogden were willing to take a risk on me. And I'm grateful for what the former city councilmen have taught me, Brother Lynn Satheth Wade, and also Jim Urie and others as well. And I'm excited to be able to work on this new city council as well, and commit myself to doing the very best that I can for the greatest amount of citizens, for the greatest length of time while I'm here in this particular office. So, thank you.
Thank you both. I think we all look forward to working with you. Other council members, would any of you like to say anything as we welcome these new members?
Just welcome. Welcome to us.
Councilman Swanson.
I just want to acknowledge, in addition to these individuals that have been elected, Julie Anderson, who's also one of our candidates. We had a, a great group of candidates, as this city often puts up. And I'm grateful for all those that step forward and are willing to put their, kind of put their neck on the line out there and, and show that they want to serve. So, Julie, we're grateful, grateful for you and your willingness to serve. I'm sure we'll find a committee or five for you to be on.
Thank you. Very well said. Councilwoman Stoker, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, we all know how much I love to talk. No, just excited. It'll be fun to have another lady here with me, so I'm not the odd man out. So, just welcome and really looking forward to this next few years with the new council, and the old.
Why are you saying "old" and looking at me?
Well, it's a great day. I've just got one quote I wanted to share from President Franklin Delano Roosevelt, our president during the Depression and then also during World War II, and a great American leader. He said, "Let us never forget that government is ourselves and not an alien power over us. The ultimate rulers of our democracy are not a president and senators and congressmen and government officials, but the voters of this country." And I think that's something we should always remember, because it's easy sometimes to think about any level of government as well. What are, what are they doing now? What have they come up with this time? When government is us, that's what's great about living in this country. The government's not a monarch, it's not an oligarchy, it's not an aristocracy, people aren't born into it. Every two to four to six years, every elected office in this country is up for a free and fair vote of the citizens of this country. And that's something that's truly beautiful, having been around the world and some places that don't have that kind of freedom, to see us be able to make our own choices really is remarkable. And President Lincoln said something similar, "This country with its institutions belongs to the people who inhabit it." So, it's great to see democracy in action, as we've had two new council members chosen by the citizens of our community. And that's what happens every four years, or every two years, we have elections in this city. So, I'm appreciative of the honor the citizens have given me also to keep serving for another four years, and I'm looking forward to working with you all as well. It's gonna be four great years. So, thank you, everyone that has come tonight, and maybe it would be good now if, is there a motion for maybe a brief recess while we say goodbye to everyone who came just for the inauguration, and then we'll continue the rest of the meeting?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to have a brief, brief recess. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we are in recess. Thank you, everyone.
This was not a move to saunter.
See you tomorrow.
See you later, buddy.
Congratulations.
Oh, you're very kind. Thank you. Abby, good to see you today.
Gave some money to him last year. Where did our?
They bought tickets to Milliard.
What happened to our dongle for this?
I don't know.
Where's our new clicker?
It's not in there.
Hey, Evan?
Yeah, see if the other ones?
Evan?
I can maybe just, this piece of paper, hold it up when I need to do ads, if you want to do that.
We all love, we all love recess, right?
There's only
Are you out of here?
There is, in the fridge there.
Yeah, they got released Sunday. I wasn't, I was another word, I was another steak. Did you, did you jump up? Yes, yes! Oh, I thought you said, oh, please release it. Please release it. No, you know what? I was there for I was there for just, just over five years, and it was wonderful. I loved the call. I really, really did.
It's like a water?
Yes. It was fantastic. Thank you.
I feel like I don't love him.
I did, I loved it. It The, the best part is getting to know everybody. Oh, yeah, and it's just
Except the ones in your ward.
Yeah, I don't know anybody in my ward. Yeah, I don't know anybody in my ward. I go there and I'm like, I saved my life. It's always like, how long you been here? It's four years.
I'm thinking the title of this would be different.
But it's, you know, it'll be fun. So, I mean, since I've been on there, my sixteen-year-old received the priesthood, and I mean, I've never I've been there when he's passed a few times, but, you know, and they're blessed, you know, he received a deacon, teacher, priest, as I've been, you know, and then my, my two younger ones, I've never really sat in church with them, just because, you know, but it's, you know, it's good, they love it. So, it'll be fun, it'll be fun to sit with them, they'll get something else coming up.
Now talking.
So, they set me apart, I do have a calling, it's, I'm gonna be exactly sure what the title is.
Hold it, don't click it.
Our state for Sons of Hittiman. Only, you know, that's over in June, so I just, it just requires one leadership up there. That'll be fun, because I've been to Sons of Hittiman camp or anything like that.
Ready then? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene. Thank you, everyone. We're, we'll go back into our work session that we have planned tonight. We've got some training for all of our council members. There's a certain number of things that we need to make sure the entire council's trained on, new and old, that'd be, generally, we try and do those at the start of the year. So, we have Darryl Child, our insurance agent, here with us tonight. Thank you, Darryl, welcome. And we have a presentation from him on some important stuff for avoiding errors and omissions, and then also harassment, so.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor and council, and once again, our congratulations to the new membership. And it's always fun to see a newly impaneled council, the excitement and the vision that goes forward for the next two to four years. And as you pointed out, Mayor, it is exciting to see at the grassroots level, democracy and accent, action. It isn't something that we can take for granted, it's something that we all count on as we think about the communities that we live in and the impact that we want to have for not only the present, but for the future. Our topic tonight is avoiding public officials' errors and omissions claims. I think everyone recognizes that as duly elected officials, we have certain legal responsibilities. And before we get into those, I wanted to show just one trend that has been occurring in public officials' liability claims, and that since 1980, the number of claims that have been arising against public officials has increased significantly, both in the dollar cost that has arisen, as well as in the number of claims. And in a few minutes, we'll talk about what type of claims potentially could arise against us, and some of the things that we can all be mindful of to prevent those kind of things from happening, both to us individually, as well as to us as a panel that is elected to represent the interests of our city. Historically, our responsibilities rest in the areas of setting our budget, setting overall policy and direction, as well as in approving ordinances, including land use, and overseeing the administration function of our local government. As we consider these various functions, over the years, the amount of duty and responsibility related to those functions has increased, and the responsibilities related to those functions has increased. And we're held to a higher standard of accountability, both by the public, as well as the press, and by other individuals who may be stakeholders who have individual interest in the things that go on in our community. I listed just a few of the more recent laws that have come to play, and I think many of us are familiar, where we have greater duties and responsibilities in regards to employment, a great deal of responsibility in transparency, which we call open meeting provisions, access to documents and records, and evolving statutory responsibilities. All of these things represent legal responsibilities that can come back to us as elected officials. But public officials are protected by insurance, and that's one of the things that we do in our role as an insurance provider for the city of North Ogden, is to provide a package of insurance that includes many different areas, the properties that you own, the vehicles that are driven on behalf of the city, the law enforcement that takes place within the city, and the actions of public officials are all included in these suite of coverages that are available to the, to the elected officials, as well as the administrative staff, as well as the government itself. But public officials, in their role, have certain duties and responsibilities that can present specific liabilities against us in certain contexts, and that's one of the things that we want to talk about today. Failure to perform on our duties, or a misstatement, violation of antitrust, or negligent or ministerial acts, all of these things are protected by a good public official's E and O policy, which is in place for the city of North Ogden. But public officials' claims are fortunately very, very rare, but when they do occur, they tend to be very costly, not only to defend, but also to settle. In this particular slide, we, we illustrate the fact that two-thirds of the cost when we get into a public official's E and O claim is generally defense cost. There's a great deal of legal cost associated if we get allegations of misduties in, on the part of public officials. And part of that increased legal cost is due to the fact that most of these claims take a great deal of time to mature or to be dealt with within the legal system. Eight point five years is typical. So, if we can envision in our mind, I think all of us have a kind of a feel of what it costs when we hire an attorney, if we think about all of those billable hours that are associated going on for many, many years, we can see that these claims can be quite impactful and cost a great deal. And the claim distribution basically goes like this, sixty-two percent of a public official's E and O claim is going to be in the defense cost, and about thirty-eight percent generally will go to the settlement of that claim. But the heart of what we want to talk about tonight are the common areas where claims have arisen historically, and we want to be sensitive as a city council to what these areas are, so that we can potentially avoid circumstances where claims may arise against us. And the first of these is failure to, to follow a prescribed duty. As a chartered city within the state of Utah, we have certain duties and responsibilities that we have given to ourselves, and those are generally encompassed within the ordinances that we pass. And if we violate those ordinances in some fashion, if we don't follow them exactly the way that they should be followed, potentially, we can create legal liability against ourselves. The second is conflicts of interest, and these are undisclosed conflicts of interest. I think we all see as elected officials that when we come into office, we have many different interests, things that we're affiliated with, groups that we know, people that we know. And as we think about those affiliations, occasionally, as a body, we have to vote on things where what we're voting on may be at odds with some of the people we know, or some of the things that we've done in the past. And so, as elected officials, we need to be sensitive to the fact that if those circumstances arise, we need to have a, an avenue of full disclosure where we can disclose potential conflicts of interest. One of the most recent and common is one of our clients had an individual sitting on a city council that had some land that they owned that the city was interested in purchasing. And the city went through a procurement process to obtain that land, but the individual didn't disclose But the individual didn't disclose that they had an ownership, a minority ownership interest in this land until after the sale had already been completed. That resulted in a potential lawsuit and conflict of interest because that disclosure had not been made. So the key to avoiding conflicts of interest is to have a method in place where we can disclose and potentially treat those conflicts of interest. Sometimes we also have situations where, as an organization, we overreach our capacity. One of the largest public officials' E and O claims that occurred within the state of Utah, and I put it on the bottom half of this slide, occurred against To Willa City. And this was approximately eight years ago. They got a twenty-two million dollar judgment against them. And the basis of that judgment is the city had promised the availability that they would obtain some water for a developer who wanted to put in a number of homes within their community. Well, when the push came to shove, the city was not able to obtain the water rights for the developer. The developer, uh, had a lawsuit, and this went on for many, many years. It fit our classic pattern of going on probably about twelve years. And at the end of the day, a final settlement occurred of twenty-two million dollars back to the developer from the city and the city's insurance carrier. And that was a combination because the city hadn't purchased liability insurance limits that high. So they had to come up with some of their own money to address this particular situation. But it's a classic example of where they had really wanted this development to occur in the community and had made some promises that overreached the authority that they had. At times, we're also in situation as elected officials where we want to be out in the community and we want to have dialogue with members of the community. But we have to be very, very careful not to promise things to individuals that we dialogue with that would, uh, create a duty back to our organization. There's a process in place, I think we all recognize it, that when individuals want things from the city, there's a process that they can go through, through the body of elected officials in a city council meeting. And we have to be very careful not to lead people to believe that we can somehow make that process go differently, or make the process go more effectively, or possibly make promises that exceed what our individual responsibility is as elected officials. Uh, the next item is that public officials, in our current context, need to be a model of standards and, and of conduct. I've worked with city councils for many, many years, and by and large, I think the model of conduct we see out of elected officials is exemplary. I think the deportment and the way the meetings are conducted, the way the public is treated, are models that everyone can follow. And I think we just need to be mindful of that, that we need to be the example. There's a few things that have gone on in, in society in general where leaders of certain industries and elected officials have not been models and have not behaved the way that they're capable of behaving. So we need to remind ourselves that at appropriate times, when there may be differences of opinion or there may be challenges in the community, that we're the model. We're going to set the standard. Hand in glove with that is that we set a standard of integrity in all of our transactions, clarity and transparency, and civil discourse. I don't think I've seen this ever happen in Utah, but if you were to pull up civil disturbances in city council meetings on a YouTube video, for example, you see in, there's been a few places in other parts of the country where there's been actual brawling in city council meetings, sometimes even between elected officials. I haven't seen that in Utah. I think by and large, we conduct ourselves very, very well. And it does us good to remind ourselves that that's the standard that we want to continue to maintain. We want to have the very highest standard because the public continues to follow that standard in their discourse with us and in their discourse with other individuals that may be in other places. Another thing that we want to just briefly touch upon today, and this is, I don't think anything that we need to deal with, uh, as, as elected officials, other than to know that our, in harmony with our conduct, we need to make sure that everything about our organization is also above reproach. And there's been a number of situations of recent vintage where that hasn't been the case, where there's been sexual harassment and other kinds of things. I threw a few slides into this presentation mainly to make elected officials aware that this is a training that we have offered to our cities. And many of our cities, including North Ogden, have had their employees go through detailed training in regards to sexual harassment and appropriate behavior. And that's what these slides are all about, just to remind us that at the very highest level, down to the lowest levels of our organizations, there are certain standards that have been in place for a very, very long time. And I don't think, uh, within the state of Utah, I've ever seen those standards winked at or not followed as they may have been in other parts of the country. And I think we're to be applauded in that regard, is that by and large, I think those standards have been upheld for a very long time. I'm referencing, we've been doing for well over ten years, for example. But what is, uh, what is harassment? It basically means nonverbal contact, which makes people feel uncomfortable. And then you can see some examples of that, and that's when we might say demeaning or remarks that make feel, people feel uncomfortable, not only about their gender, but maybe about other things that are affiliated with those particular individuals. And that includes both verbal as well as nonverbal cues that can be included within that. And this is one, uh, slide we throw into our employee training, who can commit harassment. And I think we're all familiar with the office. Virtually anybody can commit harassment. That pretty much covers the slides of the material that I wanted to touch upon tonight. But I wanted to allow a few minutes, uh, to, uh, just answer any questions that as elected officials you may have, not only in this area, but if you have any general questions regarding insurance or risk or other things affiliated with, with our role in supporting North Ogden City, I'd be happy to entertain questions.
Thank you, council members. Councilman Turner.
So, um, you'd mentioned, um, conflict of interest. How often do we need to make that be aware? I mean, for instance, I work for a general contractor, and, uh, the city may be building a building. And do I need to announce that every time the city is putting out a bid? Or is it, I announce it once? Or what would you recommend on something like that?
Anytime that your firm that is participating in an RFP or bid process, that disclosure should be made.
Okay.
Councilwoman Fossen.
Could you, you mentioned open meetings and that they can be protective from a liability standpoint. So are there specific, what are, and, and because I'm new to the council, I have questions about, what are the, are there limitations to the type of things that can be brought into a closed meeting? Where's the line? Is that a hard line to describe, or could you describe it briefly for me?
And I think most of the other council is pretty familiar with the, uh, with the line. And the line basically means that when there is a protected employment interest, when there's a protected financial interest, or if there is a legal proceeding that is in process, you may go into closed session, and those do not need to be brought forward to general awareness. So we, uh, we have to be very, very careful with open meetings. I had another city council I met with several months ago that had a situation. The question that arose with them is that, it was a very close-knit community, and at times, two or three council members would find themselves caucusing at odd times in other places. Sometimes after the regular city council meeting and sometimes over breakfast. And they asked how that interacted with open meetings laws. And I responded to them. I said, "You have to be very, very careful not to discuss the business of the city outside of the context of your formal setting where everything is fully disclosed." Uh, I said, "We had a lawsuit a number of years ago, and that was one of the basis of the lawsuit, is that certain elements of the city were making decisions outside of the normal context or the normal process." And I think that's what the open meeting laws are designed to do, is to make sure that everyone gets fair and equitable treatment. Everyone can come to a city council meeting and hear all of the various elements discussed and that we're not making pre-decisions behind closed doors and then rolling them out for the public. I think that's why all of that framework is, is, is in place.
And our city attorney has some things, councilwoman, also probably would add to this because it's very limited reasons in state law for which a closed meeting can be held.
And the thing to remember in our council, you can, two of you can meet to talk about things. As, as we've been instructed, it's better to just do it all at the city council meeting. But if something comes up and need to call each other and talk about it, there's nothing wrong with that. But if there's three of you discussing it, it takes three to make a decision in the city council. And so you don't want to be making a decision outside of the council meeting. But there'll be oftentimes when you'll call each other on the phone and say, "Hey, have you, have you seen this? This is in your area of the town. What do you think?" You know, there's things like that.
Or if, if you have an idea and you want to run it past the others, that's fine if it's with one other person. Like, call up your colleagues on the, on the city council. "Hey, I'm thinking of proposing this. No problem." Three get together for a breakfast to talk about it. Definitely a problem.
And then, as, as was mentioned, it's, the closed meetings are typically to protect the city's interests, financial or otherwise, or to, um, protect individual interests, uh, character, fitness, competency, that sort of thing. When we're talking about specific employees or individuals or health issues, those are the types of things that we'll close a meeting for. And as, as you're well aware, um, some, some elected officials don't believe in closed meetings. And so anything that is public business can be discussed in the public. It's just there's a few things we can close if we'd like to. So.
I think that's a very good point, Jonathan, because we also had a, a situation arise a couple of years ago where we were doing some detailed review on a city's workers' compensation program. And when we do those presentations, we remind the council that we have to be very, very generic and not talk about specific injuries or medical issues. It's all protected information. You know, it's a HIPAA violation if I was to come into your city council and say, "John Doe, you know, hurt his back, and here was his medical costs associated with that." So we, we all try and be very, very sensitive to that kind of protected information.
And one other thing I'll mention is, in my opinion, I don't think we have a lot of closed meetings. Probably maybe one a month or every other month that we have an occasion for. And they're for limited reasons and purposes. And it's good for the public to know if any, for example, a real estate transaction is one of the items that can be discussed in a closed meeting. But if it is discussed in a closed meeting, state law specifies that it must be fully disclosed before a vote is taken, then in the public meeting. So there's those protections that what happens in a closed meeting is never going to be a final decision made on something because that will have to come back out into a public meeting, either that same day or a week or two later, to actually be approved in a public meeting. So everything will eventually, even if it's discussed in a closed meeting, will eventually make it to a public meeting if it's going to be any action taken on it.
Good. Very good.
Other questions about this, because these are great topics? Or John, is there anything you want to add on? I asked John maybe just to give a few other details on conflict of interest. Is there anything you want to add to the discussion we had?
So the universal conflict of interest is money. If you're going to make money from a transaction, that's, you need to disclose it. The hard thing is, is that oftentimes, we want to say we've got a conflict of interest because it's our neighbor who's standing at the podium, and we're saying, "Oh, they're too close." Um, and technically, Utah law doesn't require you to abstain from that. The only one that you're required to abstain from is a financial, you know, as we discussed, the sale of property is the best example. Because oftentimes, council members own pieces of property that might be developed in the future. And so it's better, that's the, money's the, the big no-no. There is, um, an obscure requirement in state law that talks about disclosure of interests in the city. So if you were a local businessman and you own some property, um, that, that might be acquired by the city at some point or that would be dramatically affected by a change in zoning laws or stuff, uh, you should put a, a written letter, give it to the mayor, which would go in the recorder's office. It'd be a matter of public record, as well as disclose it when the transactions were occurring. So it's always better to be safe than sorry. Um, I've had folks I've worked with who are hypersensitive, um, you know, public employees who disclose every conversation they have with anyone who might ever come talk to the city. And that's not necessarily required, but it's, it's better safe than sorry. So disclose more and, and you'll never be getting, you get yourself in trouble.
Good advice. Very good.
One example, just, I'll, I'll give an example. When I was, I think my first year as mayor, I had a piece of property that something was being requested to be done on it. So I, when it came to the council, announced it was a conflict of interest. I owned the property in question. So I left the room. The mayor pro tem took over the meeting. I, I was completely gone for the whole discussion. Now that is up to the individual to decide what exactly to do, if they have a conflict, if they're going to leave, if they were going to stay. That's your individual decision to make. But that's what I felt comfortable doing because it was my personal property. I didn't even want to be in the room. So then they came and got me when it was done. So, but they don't necessarily arise a lot, but it's good for everyone to just know how to handle those kind of situations when they do arise, because it's important that our citizens be able to trust that the government is going to be done fairly. Anything else, John, you wanted to add? Or council members, any other questions or items you want to discuss?
Okay, Darryl, back to you then. Any closing comments?
Very good. Uh, I just want to say once again, we appreciate the opportunity of providing the support services to the city. In our engagement with the city, we've had the opportunity to meet with all of the departments. We've reviewed all of the city facilities, and we've been very impressed. Uh, the city has excellent leadership. I notice you have your vision statement on the wall. It's great to see that everyone has a vision going forward, and then that distills down to your individual departments and that you get well-functioning government thereby. So we appreciate the opportunity to be part of that process and to provide these services to North Ogden City.
Thank you, Darryl. Okay, we'll go next. Actually, we're going to be wrapping up our meeting with our public comment period. So again, ladies and gentlemen, if there's anything you'd like to share with the city council, we invite forward at this time, we just ask for a name and address for the minutes of the meeting at the start.
Julie Anderson, nine forty-eighth, twenty-six hundred north. I just, I didn't want to do it while all the people were here, so, and I saw there was public at the end, so I thought, uh, most people will be gone. I just wanted to congratulate both Sarah and Blake on, on their election. And I appreciate the opportunity. I had to run against them. Oh, my gosh, I'm emotion. I don't know what's going on here. I was good till I sat down there. But in doing so, I would like to put forth a challenge to the city council that as this city continues to grow, and as it continues to develop into the city that it's becoming, that we keep the memory of the old North Ogden, that we maintain that harmonious growth, that we allow the old and the new to come together and to be, make it a really great new city, I guess you could say. So my challenge is to you, as you go forward, that, you know, you remember, my big challenge was green space. And I'm still going to challenge you to make sure that our children have places to play, that our grandchildren have places to play, that our great-grandchildren have places to play as we continue to build this city, that we bring in the kind of businesses that... that we bring in the kind of businesses that will benefit the citizens of North Ogden. We're all realizing that, you know, bringing business in is a hard thing. But you know, we as residents, there are businesses that we need. And I'm going to put a little plug in here, you know, they talk about the craft store. And of course, everybody wants a hobby lobby. Well, we don't want a hobby lobby. We just need something where we can go get some sticks of glue and some florals when we need it. And I would offer a suggestion that maybe we talk to Benyans. They are in South Ogden, down there by 40th Street. They're a smaller business. They used, oh, yeah, I'm not going to remember who they used to be, Ben Franklin. That maybe we talk to those kind of people. It's a smaller business. It's something that I think would be beneficial to the city. And you wouldn't have people crying for their craft store. I appreciate Ace coming in. My husband loves the store. But to each of you, again, my challenge, remember the old as we move forward with the new. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Very well said. And thank you and Dale for all you've done for the city.
Susan Clement, 660 East 3125 North. I've been to a lot of the city meetings in the last couple of years since I retired. It's kind of fun. It's kind of interesting and wonderful to get to know what's going on in the city. And I like it a little bit better than to doing the Facebook, although sometimes I've had to do the Facebook. But just a couple of things to, and I probably should have talked to you about this before, during the open house. But one thing I've kind of noticed as I was watching on Facebook is some of you, I don't hear very well. I don't, and it's not because I don't hear, it's because where the microphone is. So when you talk, make sure that your microphone is fairly close, like mine is, so that we can hear you on Facebook. It's been fun to see the city council the last couple of years and how they've worked together so well. I think the older members, and I don't mean old, older members, will agree that you got along well together. As Mr. Child said, you guys are nice. You're nice to each other and you got along well. And so let me challenge you to, and that's probably a poor challenge because I think you'll do just fine. But just get along, be nice. I'm not sure if it's at all the elementary schools, but I volunteer at Bates and they have a sign that says, "In a world where you can be anything, be kind." So that's a challenge. Be sure you talk a lot. Take your time over some of these issues. I know the deer issue has been a long, drawn-out issue. And you're doing the right thing. You're taking your time. You're trying to get all the information you can and do the right thing. I think that's good. Talk to each other and listen and enjoy the experience. I kind of want to see who's going to be Mr. Urie's pulling the purse strings, which one of you, or maybe one of the other three, and which one of you is going to have that technical knowledge of Mr. Satterwhite. That's going to be interesting. But welcome. Thank you. And thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Clements. Any of our scouts like to say anything? Hey, good luck on your merit badge. Stay until eagle. Okay, we'll do, let's go to our staff comments. Annette, do you have anything? John?
Nope, just excited for things to come.
Okay, and let's do our city council comments. Our new members are right in the middle. So we'll just start at the end and work this way. So Councilman Turner, do you have anything?
So just a word of caution to both Blake and Sarah. I served on the city council in 2008, 2012. During my first term on the city council, I had two children. So I'm just giving you a warning. No, congratulations. It'll be fun.
And I think I had three in my term.
You know what? So there's something in the water. No, we're excited to have you here. It'll be fun. It is, it's fun. It'll be a pain in the neck, but it's fun. Not the people up here aren't pain in the necks, it's usually me. For the most part, it's fun.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Turner. Councilman Severing.
Excited to be here. Excited, scared, committed to work. And looking forward to learning from everybody.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Fossen.
I'm just happy to be here, just like Councilman Severing. Happy to be here, happy to work, here to learn. Please let me know. Let me know what my job is. That's great.
Thank you. Councilman Swanson.
Just another welcome to the new members of our council. I'm feeling a little sandwiched here. Could get, you know, that backhand from either direction now. It used to be just from the right. Now I've got to have eyes going both directions. But no, I'm grateful that all of our candidates were individuals who are outspoken, who have opinions about things and aren't afraid to express them. That's what makes our council work so well, is that we have five individuals who come with five individual thoughts and ideas and backgrounds and reasons and why-for's. And we hash it out. And we have long, sometimes overly long discussions. And, but we keep talking until we're comfortable that we've made the right decision. And I've appreciated that about the council, appreciated that about Jim and Lynn and knowing Sarah and Jim and Blake. I appreciate that about them, that they'll be, and Julie, I know you would have been as well, absolutely, that we'll have good discussions from diverse backgrounds and that always will give us the best outcome.
Just remember, it's about the kids, right?
And piano lessons. And sidewalks, yes. Sidewalks, kids and piano lessons.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stoker.
It's going to take me a while to, when you say councilwoman, that it's just not going to be now, me now. It sounds kind of weird. But that's exciting to have Sarah here with me, so. And also, that's one thing you can accuse us of, of not being able to talk.
Don't look at me. You looked at me when you said old earlier.
We do, we do hash it out and rehash it and then again. But at the end of the night, we do go home as friends. It's not taken personal. We agree to disagree and that's been the great part of it. And I will say, I'm grateful for the mayor. He's been a good example. He's, way to go, Julie. It's just been great to have him and work with him. I've learned to really admire him for his foresight. He thinks outside of the box and he's, in my opinion, he's led the city in a good direction. And I just want him to know that I'm glad to be able to have some time with him still. And welcome, everybody else, old too.
Thank you, Councilwoman Stoker. We two have been doing it the longest together, so six years now. And it's been wonderful, really has been. So, thank you. Just a couple of quick things, council members, I sent you a longer update in your email, so please check that out. But a few things I just wanted to highlight, the city hall remodel is now done and it's turned out great. It's come in way under budget. John has been the project manager and he did some of the painting and things actually himself on Saturdays. So thank you. The new doors are in, so that made it, does not feel so claustrophobic right there at that vestibule. It's working better. Of course, we combined our office downstairs with the office upstairs, so we're only managing one public desk, you know, for eight hours a day. It was getting, we just didn't need to have the building one downstairs and this one. And we had some coverage issues. We've consolidated and have that all here. So it's saving some money and some personnel in doing that. And then we redid a bunch of offices and things and a lot of it was done by our own employees. So John, where did the budget come in versus, roughly?
Just on the remodel, so we did add an extra item in that became a problem with our construction going on next door. We added in a switchgear at our generator that'll automatically power whichever building dies, the police or us, or both. But even with that, I believe we're $35,000 under budget of what you had approved.
Which is almost half the budget.
Which is almost half. You approved 75 and I think we're at 40 with the switchgear.
So it's been done in a very conservative manner, but it's turned out great. So that project's done. Public Works, just wanted to mention the great job they did plowing the snow on Christmas morning. The roads were great. The crew was out, we had the whole crew out very early Christmas morning, partially on Christmas Eve, then we sent them home for a couple of hours of sleep and then brought them out again Christmas morning. I went out and on the plows just to see how things were going and they did a great job. And there were a lot less cars out, which I was happy to see. The police department has been issuing a lot of warnings and tickets on snow vehicles. And I think that's having an effect because actually, there were a lot less cars than I've seen in past times. So they did a great job. Police is doing a great job with that as well. And just a couple of things there. So that's all I've got. Any last items from anyone?
Okay, then I'd like to ask for the council to consider a closed meeting to discuss the character of professional competency or physical or mental health of an individual at this point.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to enter a closed meeting for the reasons described. Is there any further discussion? We'll start the voting with Councilwoman Stoker.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fossen?
Yes.
Councilman Severing?
Yes.
And Councilman Turner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you then. We'll just recess briefly while we prepare for that closed session. Thank you.